She just knocked sound dead.
She's standing over there with the newspaper.
I just signed that.
There's two more people filling out papers, so I'll have to go get them.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Father.
Paul. John. Present. Ms. Hada. Call to order, Jefferson County Board of Commissioners, Special Call Session. Please call the roll.
Katie Huffaker. Janet Gordon. Joe Coleman. Jimmy Dell Patterson.
Sit.
Austin Brooks. Paul Lowe. Jim Snogris. Greg Byrd. John Johnson. Tim Seals. Sammy Solomon. Rob Blevins. Ransom Douglas. Randy Bells. John Neil Scarlett. Ronnie Coleman. Terry Dockery. Jimmy Carmichael. A.J. Walker. Marcus Reed. Heidi Thomas.
We have seventeen present, four absent. We have a quorum. Would y'all please stand for the prayer and then remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance? Mr. Standing.
The Pledge of Allegiance is due to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Like to welcome everyone out this evening. Next, we'll have parents of citizens. And this is a special call meeting because there'll be two subjects. There'll be funding for Jefferson County libraries and funding for Jefferson County Sheriff's Department. That will be it. First, we have Bill Rossar. Sir, you have three minutes at the podium.
Thank you. I am Bill Rossar. I live in Jefferson City. I'm a retired minister. I've lived in a lot of places in my short life. I'm here to speak in behalf of the library. You have a good thing going here. A really very special place in the library, not just the place, but the way it's run. I commend David for fantastic selection of new books when they come in. And I just want to encourage your full support. My feeling is for a small community, this is one of the strongest assets that you have, we have. I haven't been here all that many years here in Jefferson City. I would just encourage you to do all that you can to continue what is really a very good work, good service here in this county. I commend this county for this terrific library. And all that you can do to continue to keep it at a high level, I would just encourage you to do. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next, we have Kathy Buck.
I couldn't hear well. I don't know if you can hear me. But anyhow, I want to speak in support of both of the issues that we're here for. First, our library system. I've used it. My grandkids have used it. My kids have used it. And it's a well-run library. And in order to get the people that we need to be there to offer these services, then I feel like we need to support them with an increase in their salaries and what's needed. And, sorry, a little nervous. The other thing is for the Sheriff's Department. I feel like we need our Sheriff's Department more than ever. We have an influx of people from everywhere, as I know you all have noticed as well as I have. I work late hours and sometimes when I come home, 1:00, 2:00 in the morning, I'm seeing people out prowling. And, you know, like Mama always said, nothing good ever happens after midnight. So, but anyway, we need our sheriffs and we need to support them in a way that it's going to allow the county to, and the sheriff to hire the people that are able to be there and have enough of an income to want to come there and to be able to support their families. So I'm in favor of the increase for our Sheriff's Department.
Thank you, ma'am. Next, we have Kathleen Villers.
Good evening, Kathleen Villers. I'm speaking, and I live at 2202 Arrowhead Drive, Dandridge, speaking on behalf of myself and my husband, William Villers. We support increasing the Sheriff's Department budget for salaries because the salaries are currently out of alignment with surrounding counties. We also need better coverage in the county that currently is not possible. Why? Let me bring up two news stories that are very concerning. The first is entitled "Human Trafficking Statistical Report" by the TBI, published in 2023. It reported minor sex trafficking has jumped from less than 100 reported instances back in 2016 to currently about 700 reported instances a year. That's in Tennessee alone. To say that another way, the majority of tips dealing with minor victims aged 13 to 17 is now 45% of reported incidents. Again, that's reported incidents. Actual numbers are most likely far higher. And the article is here. Second article reported in the Epoch Times just a couple of days ago. And the title of that is "Venonswalian Gangs Are Operating in Every Major City in Tennessee," state officials say. Those major cities include Memphis, Nashville, Chattanooga, and Knoxville. Knoxville's literally in our backyard. So again, asking that you would support the higher salaries or the budget for the sheriffs. We need better coverage in our county that's currently not possible and we can't afford to lose officers. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Jim Wilson.
I'm Jim Wilson from southwest part of Jefferson City, Arthur Drive, 1159. I came to this county in the 60s as a student at Carson Newman. I saw your shirt. And I had, came from a father who was a pastor, Baptist pastor in Alabama. And my mother was a nurse, two of the most compassionate people I have ever known. During college days, and I'm just giving you a short testimony, I won't preach. I came across a book that was about a guy that did an orphanage in Korea. Tough job. He said, let, the book's title was "Let My Heart Be Broken With The Things That Break The Heart Of God." I prayed that I could be a compassionate person like my mother. God answered that prayer. And as my job as campus minister at Cumberland College for 10 years and then came back to Carson Newman in 1984, we had started home building in the poverty areas there of southeastern Kentucky. Mountain Outreach, it's called. And then up here, within a week of me being here, the students said, "I've heard those stories. What are we gonna do here?" I said, "First, we've got to see what the poverty is." We went to the neighborhood center and the lady that was doing social work just broke down in tears. She said, "Let me introduce you to some of my friends." And that's how the students got moved to do something for this county, became Appalachian Outreach and also now Angus, which is Appalachian Ministries of the Smokies. I tell you that because along the way, I've noticed all of you. I've noticed people, I've been in the living rooms of some of the poorest people in this county and surrounding counties. And I have felt the heartbeat of people. But I've also seen how young people could be encouraged to do something, stand up and do something, encourage them to get out and get their hands dirty. We started repairing homes. The first week, I saw a boy that should have been in our children's program we were starting. The next week, I saw that he'd hung himself in a closet because his father pushed him to sell drugs. Now, all I'm saying, I've got 20 seconds, is that I know that you are servants, public servants. Some of you firemen, policemen, different ones. But our librarians need our care. They're the next generation educating them. We need to do with our money and support them with a living wage.
Thank you, sir. Next, we have Brenda Morgan.
Hello, I'm Brenda Morgan. I live in Dandridge and I'm one of the highway commissioners and I also work for the highway department. There are lots of different times that our highway guys have been out on the road. People try to run them down. They don't care. They cuss at us. They throw stuff at us. We've had to call Jeff and his crew out several times to take care of us because there's one guy on, I believe it was Dumplin', that actually threatened to shoot our people. And so we have to depend on the Sheriff's Department. And I appreciate all that they do. We all work together. We're all first responders. They need more money. We need more money. We need help. We all need help. So I'm just asking. Please. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Doug Ibbetson.
Doug Ibbetson, 2510 Indian Creek Road. Disclaimer, I am on the school board, but what I, I'm speaking tonight as a private citizen. What I'm saying has nothing to do with the school board and doesn't echo any sentiment from that body. I don't think there's a person in this room who doesn't think that our sheriffs and our libraries need more money. The elephant in the room is where do we get it from? I mean, I can want a Mercedes Benz, but if I don't got the money, I ain't gonna get it. As far as I understand, there have been three new levies that have been discussed, some more than others. The wheel tax, which I'm not going into because that's been discussed on Zoom. The temporary housing tax, which I know there's a group of people who know a lot more about that, working on, so I'm not gonna talk about that. One I've heard mentioned but haven't heard much about is the mineral extraction tax. And I can speak to this because of firsthand knowledge. First of all, I honestly believe that any company that is benefiting from the resources of this county should pay this county for the privilege of mining that resource. They can't go anywhere else because that resource is not anywhere else. So if they want to do that, they're going to be staying in Jefferson County. They're going to be employing the same amount of people and they're just gonna pass that cost on. My experience with this is that I am a limited partner in a geothermal well in Imperial County, California. It's a, what we do is steam comes up, turns a turbine, the turbine generates electricity, and the electricity is sold to various users, kind of like TVA does with the dams. Up until about six years ago, that was just steam. All right? Then one of the larger companies began evaporating that steam and what did they find in that steam? Lithium. Now that county is making, where they weren't making a penny on that steam before, they're making about $4.5 million per year on that steam. The tax was not put in place after the lithium was discovered. It was in place. What I'm saying is I would hope you would give a long, a long look at that. Even if we put it in place, even if what's being extracted right now does not qualify for that tax, who knows down the road, kind of like what happened with our mine or our steam, we could find something. And even if we generate $50,000 a year, that is enough money for a sheriff. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we have Mike Foley.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, commissioners. Mike Foley, 318 Oak Vista Drive in Dandridge. While recognizing that funding issues are present within other county departments, I will limit my comments to the Sheriff's Department. It was sobering to hear the Director of the Tennessee Bureau of Investigation recently warn of the reappearance of a violent gang from Venezuela in the major cities of our state, as a previous citizen noted. It was also a reminder that threats to our security must be taken seriously. With that in mind, it seems logical to discuss funding of the Sheriff's Department in two steps. First, considering the four open deputy positions, does the sheriff currently have the necessary resources to protect the citizens of Jefferson County? Second, if the answer is no, what must be done to fill those open positions as soon as possible? I appreciate the concern expressed by some commissioners about making changes outside the normal budget process. A disciplined and cautious approach to spending money is essential. However, we all know that real life doesn't follow procedure. There are times when we must be, when we must be proactive. I believe this is one of those times. Similar to the oath you took as county commissioners, the oath taken by the sheriff and deputies includes the words, quote, "I will perform with fidelity the duties of the office to which I have been elected or appointed," end quote. In other words, the performance of our law enforcement officers is interlinked with the performance of our legislative body. So tonight, I ask you to provide the Sheriff's Department with the resources it needs. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Chris Mice.
Chris Mice, 1081 Guire Road, here to say we need to get behind our Sheriff's Department and support them. We need to get this pay increase. And some of the county commissioners have been pushing this wheel tax. I'm all against the tax, but what if we took this wheel tax at $25 and split this up into $6 quarters, $6.25 a quarter? Give $6.25 to the road department, $6.25 cents of it to the Sheriff's Department, $6.25 of it to the EMA, and let's split this other $6.25 up between all the volunteer fire departments. That's roughly a little over $250,000 per department. That won't be needed in their budget. And I think most citizens would support this. I would, and I'm against taxes. That way, it's not just handing the county commission a million-dollar credit card every year for y'all to store up wherever. We know where it's at. And doing this, put a four-year cap on it or sunset. And by that time, the mineral tax and Airbnb should be up off the ground, if that's what y'all are going for. And hopefully, we can do away with it. And, you know, we just need to get behind all our departments and get their pay up where they need to be. And that's about it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next, we have Brett Kilgore.
Good evening. I'm Brett Kilgore. I live in Timberlake on Lake Forest Circle, and I'm speaking as an individual in support of the Sheriff's Office and the libraries. Some of the commissioners here are in law enforcement or have been in law enforcement. I worked with Paul Lowe 34 years ago. Sammy and I worked together years ago in the job. But anyway, the law enforcement officers put their lives at risk every second of every day when they're out there, not just on the job. Even when they're off duty, they're usually armed and they never know what they're gonna come across. They work rotating shifts. They work nights. They're away from their families, their wife, their children, their husbands. They really give a lot, and a lot of times, they even use their own personal funds to become certified by attending academies on their own. And then they go through the FTO program with the Sheriff's Office. But either way, you know what it costs, tens of thousands of dollars for the sheriff to hire a deputy and to train them and to put them through the academy and the FTO program. And by the time they're ready to go out on their own, we have a lot of taxpayers' dollars invested in them. We don't want to be losing them to other departments that have higher pay. So I think Jefferson County has some of the finest law enforcement officers in the nation. I've met and seen a lot of them and worked with some of them through the years. And I think they're well-deserving, them and their families are well-deserving, and the library employees of this pay raise. And I hope that you all will support it and get it done, whatever it takes. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Last, we have a lady, Doris Perkins, from 826 Lebden Road, Jefferson City, that wished to have her letter read to the seat. So I will read it for her, in the dolce. Today's standard banner article about the need for raises in the Sheriff's Department and library personnel. There are also an article that spoke to the shortfall of funds in the highway department. I also read the letter to the editor from Mr. Marcus Reed. According to his figures, the failed wheel tax would bring in 1.2 million in revenue. This money would go a long ways, if not all the way, to cover an expense. I personally would happily pay the additional wheel tax if the money was put to good uses. Please consider this issue. Thank you, ma'am, for your letter. Next on the agenda, we're at the new business. And first, the new business is funding Jefferson County libraries. Ms. Hyde, would you please speak into the microphone and turn it on there, please?
I posed the final question that was made to the Budget Committee for the libraries in the amount of twenty-nine thousand, six hundred and thirty-nine dollars be approved.
We have a motion on the floor and a second by Mr. Tim Seals. Question or comment?
May I ask Mr. Phillips to come and talk?
Sure.
Dave, is your question?
Sir, would you please state your name?
My name is David Phillips. I'm the Director of the Jefferson City Public Library. And I would like to thank everyone who came out to support us tonight. And I would like, if you would, please stand. I'm here tonight on behalf of the Jefferson County Library Board and on behalf of its employees. We would like to request funding in order to increase our minimum pay rates for full-time library assistants and part-time library clerks and substitutes. The Library Board is asking that the minimum pay rates be set at fifteen dollars for full-time employees and twelve dollars for part-time employees. These rates would apply to current and new, new hires. We presented this request to the, during budget preparations as county policy requires. We were denied that request at the suggestion of some of your commissioners. We made a similar request at the last Budget Committee meeting in October, but were denied again. In total, we're asking for twenty-nine thousand, six hundred and thirty-nine dollars. That's down from our original request to forty-one thousand, two hundred and thirty-eight that we made back in April. And that's due to the COLA raises that our employees received this year. The request is, the requested increase is an annual figure provided by the County Finance Department. And we would like to see that made retroactive to July 1st. According to several studies, a living wage in Jefferson County is nineteen dollars and twenty-seven cents an hour. That's for a single person with no dependents. Most of our employees have families to support. We're not even asking for the, the minimum living wage. We're just asking you to meet us partway. We're asking for this because our staff do not earn a living wage. Last year, we lost five employees to better-paying jobs, two to other county departments. We can't attract and retain good employees on our current pay rates. Hiring someone just to have them leave a few months later is expensive, detrimental to our operations, and terribly frustrating. We acknowledge that the county provides a generous benefits package, and that is greatly appreciated. However, employees who can't afford decent housing or put food on the table, we can't expect them to perform their best. Most of our library staff are very talented. They have minimum of bachelor's degree. Several have master's degrees. These folks should be making more than eleven to thirteen dollars an hour. In order to properly assist our community, they have to be proficient and knowledgeable in many areas. We appreciate the monumental task you all have in funding county operations. We really do. But however, our employees deserve to be fairly compensated, and in today's economy, they're just not. By approving this request, you will greatly improve the lives of our people. Please show them that you care about them before someone else does. Thank you.
Mr. Attorney Attorney.
What's the funding source for the motion on the floor?
Ms. Hyde, what would be the funding source? Are you talking about fund balance?
Yes. Put, take it out of the fund balance, yes.
Okay. Tim, are you good with that? That would be the funding would come from the fund balance. Next, we have Janet Norton.
This was my number-one question the last time we voted, and yes, I voted no. And I've never done that before, especially for the Sheriff's Department. I'm a strong supporter of the Sheriff's Department. I want the deputies to have that money. My concern was, when we came to balance the budget, we were millions of dollars in the hole. And we spent numerous hours trying to figure out where we could cut, and to the point, we were told, "You can't cut anymore. There is nowhere else to cut money." So, then, we came back and asked for the Sheriff's Department and library money again. There were no new revenues introduced between July and now. So, we proposed, we take it from fund balance. Jessie, is that something we can do every year?
You can't, that's not recommended because it's a reoccurring expenditure.
Okay, so that's what I was thinking. We have, for our salary, that is a reoccurring expense. We have got to come up with a revenue to cover this expense. We cannot pull from this pot and pull from this pot and pray that it happens. We have to have a continuous resource coming in that says, "We got this covered." I just don't see how we can, we don't have it. That was my concern. And Lord knows, I'd love to give it to you. Above all, you know, I, I just, you all deserve it. But I don't see where we can get it. My next question is, don't throw anything at me. Is there any way that we could, the sheriff, and this is the question for him, move his budget around so that it is covered? You know, take something away from one area and give to another? We met with all the other department heads, and nobody else had any more money to give. Poor old Kevin gave and gave and gave till he couldn't give anymore. And he's cut dry. The ambulance department gave up a whole bunch of ambulances, and, and there's people here from the road commission that are underpaid as well. If we take care of everybody in Jefferson County that's underpaid, we got a whole lot to do. And I'm just trying to figure out, where do we get the money? I'm looking for other solutions besides pulling from this pot because I don't think that's something we're gonna be allowed to do over and over again. We need a resource.
Anyone else?
I.
Ms. Hyde, would you like to close?
Yeah. Just because it comes from the fund balance this year doesn't mean it has to come from the fund balance. It has to be recurring, coming from the fund balance. I think there are times when you make exceptions, and I think this is the time that we are a place that you need to make the exception.
Are you done, Ms. Hyde?
Yes.
Thank you. We shall proceed to vote. Nine yes, eight no. It fails. Next, we'll move into funding for Jefferson County Sheriff's Department. Is there a motion on the floor by Austin Brooks? Is there a second? Rob Levens. Question or comment? Would you like to read your motion?
I would.
Go for it.
Mr. Chairman, the sheriff, the sheriff had proposed a salary adjustment to the Budget Committee. Am I coming in a little hot? The sheriff proposed to move two-hundred-and-sixty-four thousand, one-hundred-and-seventy-nine dollars from his overtime budget into the salaries or whatever we like to call that. And that is my motion that this body approve of.
You said sixty-four or two-fifty-four?
Two-hundred-and-sixty-four thousand, one-hundred-and-seventy-nine dollars.
Thanks, sir.
That would leave a remainder of forty-four thousand, seven-hundred-and-fifty-four dollars in his overtime budget.
Would you repeat that last number, make sure we're right?
Forty-four, seven, fifty-four.
Question or comment? Sammy Solomon.
I like to say that I'm not against the Sheriff's Department. I used to work for the Sheriff's Department down in Knox County. I've never been against police officers. I appreciate that they do. And I think it's a shame that you're a county employee and you get on social media and put down the commissioners the way some of y'all did the last time. And I feel like you should be terminated from your position or something done to you. I've never been against the Sheriff's Department or anything. And I just wanna say, I can't vote for this tonight because it's gonna be reoccurring next year. And I'm looking out for the people that's on fixed income, that is not gonna be able to pay for their property taxes. And I, I just don't wanna do the people like that. And if y'all wanna get mad at me, that's fine. But I think the world of the Sheriff's Department. They do a good job. Everybody does. And I, I just can't vote for it. Sorry.
Janet Norton.
Okay. Same thing that I said about earlier, is trying to figure out where to get the money from. I am looking for a revenue. If we pull from this this year, what are we going to do next year? What, give me some ideas. Does the sheriff have any ideas? If there's anybody who works with a budget can give me some ideas where else we might get this money from. It was talked about possibly bringing up the wheel tax again, which I know makes y'all wanna cringe. But if we did add a wheel tax and, or move pennies from the property tax, you know, can we do that and, and make this sheriff's budget happen? The second question, and it's several questions actually, but it's for the sheriff. The budget, if I read it right, from what we got, has increased from last year to this year by 1.3 million dollars and a little more. Is there anywhere that you can think of that you could move monies around that we could make these deputies get their pay?
The 1.3 million that you're referring to is a federal grant through the VCIF. It is a, it was a two-year grant that was hooked in through the federal government. That's where we have our forensic center at Carson Newman. This is the second year of it. That's what the 1.3 million is. So, it's really, it's tied up in a grant. As far as the funding, the, the funding that we got's there. This funding is left over from when the state agreed to pay for SROs. This funding that we were paying the SROs with then was put into this overtime. So, it's, it's there. We're not gonna work two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars worth of overtime. It, it just ain't gonna happen. So, I mean, there's gonna be excess money there. I mean, we're not gonna use it all.
Do we have reasonable, is it reasonable to think that we're gonna have that much money again next year in overtime to, or SROs to move to overtime to take care of raises?
Yeah, I mean, the state's gonna fund that every year. I mean, that money's gonna be there. I mean, it's in the budget.
So, that's a grant? The SRO's a grant?
Yeah, yeah, the, the SROs are paid through the grant.
Do we know how long the SRO grant's gonna last?
Well, I know it's gotta take a big vote from the Senate to stop it. It's gonna take a, a two-thirds vote for them to go back on it. And I mean, every county basically in the state of Tennessee now is getting money from this. And that was the idea. A lot of the Sheriff's Department took the money that they had and generated it and asked for it to be put back into salaries for the Sheriff's Department. But in other words, this is in our budget. This two-hundred-and-thirty-thousand dollars is in our budget right now.
Two-hundred-and-thirty thousand?
Or it's, it's a little bit more than that. I can't remember what the final total of the...
What you're wanting to move from the overtime?
Well, yeah, that, but the total, the, the total money just got set aside for overtime.
We moved it from the SRO pay to overtime when the county eliminated comp time and went to pay overtime only. So, we didn't wanna lose those funds just in case. We didn't, it was the very first year of the SRO grant, and we didn't know much about it, how long it would last. So, we did not wanna lose those. The Sheriff's Department has a maintenance of effort. So, we can't, we can't decrease his budget. We had to move it somewhere to keep it, retain it.
Can we keep doing that without getting in trouble?
What do you mean?
Like, can we do this every year, that they pay for our SROs and take that money and put it in the overtime slot and then move it to raises? I mean, can we keep, can we keep doing this triangle to make the money happen? Will it happen every year?
As long as we receive the SRO grant, then the SRO salaries are covered. The schools do reimburse fully two SROs to us, so...
So, can we move that money permanently to the raises?
Then, that would reduce his overtime pay down to about forty-four thousand dollars per year. So, I, I imagine he's gonna use more than forty-four thousand in overtime. If he has money left over a year in from his salary lines on year-end budget amendments, I normally shift those funds to keep it within his department. So, let's say he has four of the positions for remaining of the year. He'll have over a hundred thousand dollars, possibly two-hundred thousand. I would shift to cover that overtime line.
Okay.
But the SRO grant, there's, I don't know a guarantee, but we have it this year. They sent the money, so we're good this year, but...
That scares me.
I don't think there's a letter or anything that says we have it going forward.
Well, I mean, it's reoccurring is what it was there, and then it's gonna take a two-thirds vote from the Senate to stop it and to go back on it. So, basically, I, I forget how many school systems didn't have SROs whatsoever. So, it's funding all the SROs basically across the state, which some counties like Davison County declined to take because they didn't want SROs in their school, so...
With, with this out on the table, I do wanna speak on the maintenance of effort situation. This would reduce his overtime down to about forty-four thousand. So, if we were to go and have to increase it from fund balance, like we're doing quarterly from the other departments, with his maintenance agreement that he has with the mayor, I, I would request that he, he would put in that, that this would not increase his maintenance of effort every year as we have to increase his overtime line. That, that's his discretion.
So, if our forty-four thousand doesn't cover it, then we've gotta pull it from somewhere else.
It would, fund balance is all I would know of to cover it.
Do you rest, Janet?
I don't know that I rest, but I asked. I guess, here's a question I ask, and I don't know that y'all could answer it. I mean, are we willing to look at the wheel tax again? We're gonna have to have some kind of revenue to back this up because if that ever gets, if the SRO money, if the grants ever get taken away. And I worked in a job where it was on a grant, and we were told we were, we were good to go. Two years into it, I lost my job to another entity that was a group that they gave our grant to because they felt like it was a better allocation of the money. So, that just, this makes me a little nervous, and I'm... Yeah, I rest.
Thank you, Mr. Reed.
Sheriff, would you mind coming back up, please, sir? I just have a few questions that I would like to ask. And before I do that, I would like to ask a finance director a question. What, what's our property tax coming in, being paid now? Pennies, almost twice of what it was last year?
Almost twice. We, we budgeted ninety-five percent, so it's a little shot of two-hundred-and-thirty-five thousand dollars for one penny.
So, we are, we are actually bringing more revenue in with the reappraisal and the property tax increase, correct?
It's equivalent, that was equivalent, but we did increase property taxes.
Right.
So, we are bringing in additional revenue due to the property taxing.
Okay. Sheriff?
Yes.
I, I do not wanna put you on the spot. I respect you. You're a constitutionally elected official. I know you do your job. I see your deputies out on the road. I'm very concerned because from my previous experience, I know we have six zones in this county that you support, the way we break down the county. Is that correct?
Five.
Five? Okay. And sometimes, we only have three deputies on the road at night? And sometimes we only have three deputies on the road at night, is that correct?
Yes.
And you're responsible for your budget. The people of this county, as it comes from county commission, give you a budget to operate on. And you firmly believe that the budget that you have, you can take this money that you're talking about and you can run your department efficiently. Is, is that a correct statement on my part?
What's being propo, what's being proposed, yes?
Yes. Okay. Next question. I've heard a lot of, uh, innuendo, a lot of rumors, and I take all rumors with a grain of salt. Uh, I know how hard it is to be a department head in this county because I had to stand before this same body as the Director in nine-one-one and try to squeeze money out of this body to make sure that I had dispatchers to cover the job. And I bet you a hundred bucks, and I'm not a betting person and I can't afford to lose a hundred, I would bet you that Mr. Crowther, Director Crowther, would support what I'm saying. I believe that the citizens of the county put their trust in Sheriff Jeff Coffey. He's been recognized through the state, his deputies have been recognized through the state. And I would ask you this, Sheriff, you have four chief deputies. Why do you have four chief deputies?
Well, got a hundred and nine employees in different divisions. You got one over the jail, one at sees detectives, one over the schools, and then one over patrol. You got a lot of moving pieces. It's very easily to miss something. Those people speak on my behalf, and, uh, that's why I have them there, so that they can oversee every department that it's running as efficiently as it can, and they do an outstanding job with it. Um, you know, our schools, if Tommy was here, he can tell you, uh, Homeland Security had a regional meeting up at Lakeway a couple of months ago, and they asked me to come up, and they recognized Jefferson County as being one of the counties that's the initiative and the innovations that we do. We do things here that other school districts across the state say, why do you do that and how do you do it? There's things that we do with the school system here to keep the kids safe, uh, that's, uh, that's top line. You go to some of the biggest counties in this state and they're like, why are you doing that? And we take a lot of that from the fact of learning from shootings that happen and incidents that happen, that, that we can do that with. I mean, I don't think there's any more important job than, uh, the sheriff can have is keeping seven thousand kids and about eleven hundred, eighteen hundred teachers safe in that building. They're defenseless. And, uh, we take a lot of pride in doing that, and, uh, uh, our chief that's over that does an outstanding job. I'm in communication with him every day about something that goes on in our school. And, uh, the last thing that I want is, uh, and then we spend a lot of time training because if evil shows up, we're going to kill it before it, before it gets our kids. But, um, um, you know, um, uh, and, uh, and the rest of our departments too. I mean, um, the patrol deputies, what limit we have, I mean, uh, our burglaries are down, our thefts are down, and they're out here, and I mean, they're working hard to, uh, to accomplish it with a county this big with fifty-eight thousand. And, um, you know, and, and when we're full staffed, I mean, we're good to go. I mean, there's counties that's got less population than we do that run twice the manpower we do, and their crime rate is, uh, worse than ours. And I talked to one of their sheriffs up there. I mean, they double the amount of detectives that we have because their crime rate ain't where it's at, uh, where ours is at. But, uh, the, the, the men and women that go out there and work, I mean, they do a good job and the people that's leading them. But I just, I don't want to have, um, uh, any weakness in our department. Somebody's there to, to look over them to make sure if they need some help, if they need resources. I mean, they can speak on my behalf or they can call me. And, uh, I'd be glad, and I ain't too good to, uh, was out patrolling today, put a uniform on and go out and patrol. Uh, it's all about November, uh, from now to Christmas is the biggest time, um, and threat for package thefts because everybody is ordering stuff online and having it sent to their home. So we put emphasis on that. Package thefts, I mean, people drive by. A couple of years ago, we had a guy following the UPS truck around. He dropped something off, go up down the road, he'd give it time, he'd go back and grab it. I mean, you know, the criminal mind, sometimes you got to think like them, but, you know, sometimes you just have to take the initiative and try to stop that before it comes.
Next question. Are, are you still, is your department still focused on drug trafficking and drugs within the county?
Yes.
So you're, you're putting a great effort into that part.
Yeah, and...
And I was, uh, had the pleasure of, uh, going through the forensics at Carson Newman, and I think what you, along with those other people that came up with that grant are doing a great job, which is very vital to this county. On the subject of this, what you want to do, where are these raises directed? Are they directed to the deputies out on the street, majority of them, or where are they going?
The, the biggest section of it's going to the deputies on the street. You, you've kind of got to smooth it out to where, you know, there's, the raises are spread out. You just can't give one, then you're going to be in a bind there. So, but no, the, the biggest raise will be to the, the road deputy that's on the, down the street.
Sheriff, I, as a former emergency person, I respect what you're doing, I respect what you have said, I think you're open and direct. I cannot question, uh, why we as a body could not see that this is so essential for the citizens of our county that we have deputies prepared to respond to any incident. And if anyone would just take time and do a little bit of, uh, focusing and reading and looking at different problems within our state, within our community, if we don't have the deputies to take care of us, we just might as well kiss it goodbye. I'm all for taking care of this, and I will forewarn us as a body that I'm willing to bet at every other department in this county come this time for this budget coming up, we're going to be asking for something for our employees to make a livable wage. And if we deny this tonight, we're wrong. And I know I read the letter from, uh, the lady, she mentioned what I said about the one point four million. I want to clarify that. I am not against a will tax. If I can have a will tax that would take four pennies of the property tax out of the debt service fund and put it into a general fund so we could handle problems like this, I would support it completely. And I think we can do that. But Sheriff, I hope that us sitting on this board tonight would examine ourselves because I know if somebody's coming in my house and after I shoot them, I'm going to be calling you to back me up. And I appreciate your service to the county, and I appreciate the deputies that are here tonight. We needed to do this, commissioners. It's on your vote. We've already denied a little bit of money to the libraries at twenty-nine thousand dollars. You got to be kidding me. And we couldn't do that? Thank you, Sheriff.
Ronnie Coleman, your turn.
First of all, I want to clear the rumor that, uh, the commission doesn't care about the officers. It's a flat-out lie. Every officer in that department needs more money. That's understandable. That's why I tried to get a will tax passed for that very reason, for situations like this. But it didn't pass. We started out this budget year one million, five hundred thousand dollars in debt, right out of starting gate. We're already in a hole. My question is, where are we going to get the money from? We can't spend it when we don't have it? It's a simple question. Does anybody have an answer for it? Every department needs more money. You got road department people making twelve dollars a year. That's insane. It's a dirty, rotten, filthy shame.
I'd be willing to pay another fifty dollars will tax in order to get...
But until we get something to bring some more money in, we're going to end up being another shortfall this year. And when we don't set the budget, the state's going to come in and set it. Then you're talking about a property tax increase. It'll turn you upside down. That's all happening.
Is there anyone else? Ms. Jennings has already spoken. Is there anybody else who needs to speak? Okay, Ms. Jennings.
Thank you. Um, my question was, what, how much of that raise is going to somewhere else? And I think you and I talked to somewhere else with supervisors? How much of that's going to supervisors and not to, um, deputies?
It goes up, the largest goes from taking it up to there, and then actually, when this raise goes into effect, they're making what the supervisors are making now. So when this raise goes in, then they get bumped up, and then the others, but it's nowhere near what, uh, the deputies are getting bumped up. But if we do this, if, if this passes and this goes into effect, they're going to be actually making more than what supervisors are. So it had to be a bump and had to be smooth across the border, or you're going to have, can't have deputies making more monies than the supervisors.
Do you know how much of that's going to the supervisors? It's like twenty-five percent of it, or...
Well, it may be around eighteen, eighteen to twenty.
Okay.
But the largest portion's going to the road deputies.
Okay, thank you. And, um, I had a question. I think what, um, Marcus was talking about was a really good idea. Why don't, why don't somebody make a motion to do that, to move the pennies, and that sounds like it would cover it? I mean, we actually have that going to be coming in. Could we do that, Jesse?
We can't move pennies mid, mid-cycle. We can only move pennies during budget cycle.
Which doesn't happen again until February?
Um, well, we start talking about it in February, but you vote on it at the end of June. It goes into effect July first.
And if we do the will tax, we'd have to do that, bring it up at the January meeting and couldn't do it a second vote until April.
And then it would be able to be budgeted into fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six, would go into effect July first.
That wasn't what I wanted to hear.
Sorry.
Mrs. Scarlett.
Wait, I, two, two more things, and these aren't questions, these are statements. I actually contacted, um, CTS and talked to them, um, about, I talked to Derek, I believe it was Woods, and Jim, I want to say Daly, but I'll have to look those up. Um, they're over the studies on the jail and the roads. That's what they do for a living, for CTS. And they said that our current salaries at our Sheriff's Department, they were thirteenth out of ninety-five counties from the top in pay. Um, I guess why it looks so bad is because the county's right around us. Sevier County is, obviously got all the tax money coming in from, you know, it's severable, and what all they've got going in, and then Knox County is, is huge, and so they bring in a whole lot more money. So it makes it look like we're way lower than them, but we, it's kind of hard to compare us to those counties because we're not that size. Um, so we are thirteenth out of ninety-five counties in the state of Tennessee, and that was a two thousand nineteen study. Um, actually, I think it was finished in two thousand twenty. And they will do a free wage study for all of the salaries for Jefferson County for free. It doesn't cost us anything, and they can do a comparison, they can look at what we compare to the other ninety-five counties, as well as those counties that are similar to us in size. Um, so they offered that, and they said they had done studies on a multitude of police departments, but sheriff's departments, but ours has never been done, and they're willing to come do that. So I just wanted to add that in there.
Thank you, you rest.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Scarlett. This, the way we're fixing to do this, or the way this vote, the motion is, is a bad plan. We will absolutely be back here before the end of the budget year with amendment to cover that overtime. We will not have enough money. That's why the money was put into that line. Forty-four thousand dollars will not cover the overtime. And the only place when you put this in, Mr. Ronnie, the only place it comes from, unless you establish a new revenue for it, is going to be property tax. So if we're going to do it, the way we're doing it is absolutely the wrong way to do it. And in the middle of the year, once we set the budget with the other, the other departments, and all the departments in the county, I think this is a bad precedent we're sitting because there is absolutely no reason that every department in the county don't come and ask for a raise at the middle of the year.
Anyone else? Not hearing any? We will proceed to vote. We have ten yes, seven no, is that correct, Mr. Clark? Fails for the lack of eleven. This concludes tonight. Is there a motion to adjourn?